All right, I have 6:32. I'll call the August Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda itself. I have one item to add under new business. We'll discuss a resolution for the community septic system we're looking at building at Hattam Elementary. Kate, do you have any other additions or comments on the agenda?
I do not.
All right.
So I guess it's on me. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All right, this is ridiculous. There's two of us, all in favor. Say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Okay. All right, next item, approval of minutes from 12 July. Kate, would you make a motion to approve?
Yes, this is Kate. I make a motion to approve the July 12, 2021 meeting minutes.
All right, I have no comments on the minutes themselves. Kate, did you see anything?
No.
All right, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. All right, public comment. Only, we've got two people from the public here. Marge, Maurice, anything at this point? Nothing from Marge. Maurice is still on mute. I will assume not. Maurice is going to get a chance to speak later, so we'll go through that one. All right, selectmen's update. Uh, starting with the projects on the Rossi property, Scoville Hole and Bridge Road projects, the swing bridge, the sidewalks, the roundabouts, basically have been no changes of significance since our last, uh, last update in July. Roads, chip sealing of our Kona Drive Jackson Road are done. Old Turnpike Road paving is done. Uh, Dublin Hills and High Street, they're clearing, finishing some last minute items, curbing. And in a couple of places on Dublin Hill driveway aprons. Uh, let's see, the roads we are double chipping, which is, we had chipped them once and put down millings and then chipped, and now we're doing again. Blue Hills, Basket Chop, Agoo Springs, both of those in Hattam Neck, Plains Road, uh, should be finished up, maybe this week, next week at the latest. Uh, other roads, Caliary Depot Hill, Parsonage will start as soon as we finish on Dublin Hill, and that'll be followed if weather and the gods permit with there in Maple Avenue West.
Bob, can I ask you a quick question about that?
Sure.
The, the chip sealing, so is, so like I know, for example, Brainerd Hill right now is chip seal, well, has like the loose rock down that's been getting compacted down as people drive on it. Is that the final step of chip sealing, or does something else happen after that?
Well, what'll happen after that, after it's been worn in for a couple of weeks, we'll do a sweeping on it, and that should wrap it up, and if that, it may be, we'll come back and do another sweeping afterwards, but that should be about it.
Okay, thank you. I've had a couple people ask me like, why is my road like this? And I'm like, it's not forever. It's gonna get compacted down.
Well, my answer to people at this point is, go to Schuler Road, and the answer is because we don't want your road to look like Schuler.
All right, I'll start telling people that, too.
Okay. Uh, yeah, chip sealing is a maintenance process. It's to keep the roads from deteriorating further. Uh, the exact process, I mean DOT recommends one way to do it, although highway departments do it a little bit differently, but we're in sync with what most of the Connecticut towns that are ship, ship sealing, which is still most towns are doing. Okay, community septic project, we'll talk about this a little bit more later about the septic, but basically, last meeting, I told you we'd issued a request for proposal for an engineering firm to design the community septic system. The deadline for replies was July 15th. We've received three replies. The Board of Selectmen will take a look at all three of them and pick the, uh, company we feel is best. We are convening a special Board of Selectmen's meeting on the 18th of August to do that. Most of that meeting will be executive session to discuss the pros and cons of the firm's offer and just, and interview the firms themselves. So we'll convene, we'll convene the meeting, immediately go into executive session, and when we come out of each session, that we're interviewing all of the companies, uh, then we'll have a public vote as to which company we think should go forward with the design. So, I don't mean to discourage people attending, but there's not going to be a whole lot you're going to be able to say. Uh, and then finally, the private projects, the multi-family housing on, uh, Brooks Court, potentially at, uh, 105 Bridge Road, the Eco Tourism property, the old Eco Tourism property, uh, and the Wellness Center and on Island Dock Road, Seven Island Dock Road. Uh, I've got no, no updates on those since our, the last update in July. Other things to talk about, unfortunately, bringing back an item I've talked about a lot over the last year and a half, but hadn't for the last two months, and that's COVID-19. Um, we had no cases reported at all from 5/16 until July 19th, 65 days of no cases. Uh, and unfortunately, since then, we've had 11 new cases crop up in town. So I would caution everyone, please, this pandemic is not over, the virus is still out there. Please be careful, and I'd encourage vaccination for everybody. Uh, the Delta variant, as you may very well know, accounts for about 90%, 90-plus percent of all new cases in the U.S. The particular change in Connecticut that came about last Thursday evening, governor issued a new executive order, 13A, uh, dealing with predominantly masking. Currently, under Department of Public Health guidelines, masks are required for anyone who's not vaccinated and going indoors in a building that's a public setting, whether that's a government building, a business, hospital, anywhere the public can go. If you're not vaccinated inside, you're supposed to have a mask. But if you are vaccinated, masks aren't required. The authority granted to the town chief elected official or administrative official executive authority is to make, we can loosen, we can, excuse me, tighten that requirement. So we could require, and a couple of towns are, everyone who's in a town building to wear a mask, regardless of your vaccination status. Uh, we, we could go as far as requiring anyone in any public building, which would be businesses, to wear a mask. So far, as to my knowledge, at least in Middlesex County, no one is going to that extreme. Two of the three of the towns are requiring anyone in a, in a government building to wear, a town-owned building to wear a mask. Uh, but no one has extended that to the businesses. But Gouhaven has, I think Hartford is talking about it, so we may see it in some other town, some other cities. I don't intend at this point to require masks of unvaccinated people in public buildings or town buildings, primarily because on Friday, after the governor's orders came out, a study was released by the Kaiser Family Foundation. They're a nonprofit who study health policy, healthcare issues. It's a nonpartisan group. Their findings are nationwide, but as far as Connecticut goes, based on state-reported data, based on hospital-reported data, based on data from the John Hopkins COVID site, only somewhat less than two tenths of 1% of the COVID cases in Connecticut are breakthrough cases, and they're in fully, fully vaccinated people. Since mid-July, when the COVID infections have started ticking up, Connecticut has had 8,001 new confirmed cases. Applying that two tenths of 1% number to that 8,000 cases means statewide, 16 of those cases were breakthrough cases. I'm willing to bet not, or any of them are in Hattam. And even if they are, it's an insignificant number. So as things stand right now, I don't see any need in town to require masks on vaccinated people in any setting. I will add that, again, I want to stress, the governor's authority just goes to the towns. It doesn't allow them to loosen restrictions. I know a lot of people are concerned about masks on their children in schools. That's still under the DPH orders. Masks are required in all schools of everybody, as well as hospitals and some other public places like the airport, for example. As far as schools go, the State Department of Education, the State Department of Public Health are conferring as to what the requirement should be coming up for the schools. But right now, the town has no authority to change the school masking requirements. From what I read in the order, neither does the school district or the Board of Education. We're all awaiting guidance from the, the state. All right, next thing I have in the update. I think I'm telling it to everybody who was, everyone here was there. We had a town meeting on July 15th. Uh, all of the items brought forward to the town meeting were approved. They were reappointing the members of the Hattam Killingworth Recreation Authority for another year. That's Jason Lonnegren, Jennifer O'Neil, Peter Christopher, David Law. We had a couple of transfers to make in the capital fund from projects that had money left over after completion to a couple of projects that went over the projected cost. Those were approved. Uh, we increased the amount we had budgeted for the Beaver Meadow Culvert. Um, just due to an increase in the estimated costs in the, some three years since we had put it into the plan. We approved the purchase of the McCann property, a quarter acre piece of property in the Higginham Cove area for 21,000. The meeting voted to authorize the acceptance, if it's par for the $1.8 million grant from the Department of Education, excuse me, Economic Development, Community Development. It's brownfield remediation for cleaning up Scoville Hole property. And then finally, we approved the acceptance of $128,205 grant from the Department of Public Health, which is targeted for the design of the community septic at Hattam Elementary School. So that's it for the town meeting. The last thing I have to say, union negotiations, we're still negotiating with the Teamsters. We have hit an impasse out of item. Uh, the negotiations are going to mediation, uh, which will be probably sometime next month before we can get all the players in the room. And things have been amicable, we just hit a spot we can't agree on. That's all I have. Kate, do you have anything to add?
I do. Uh, the farmer's market has been going great, but we are taking a few weeks off. Um, so the market runs through August 20th, and then we take a three-week break. So we will resume on September 17th, um, with a bit of a different vendor lineup and a more fall feel. Um, we made that choice because we found that those last couple of weeks in August, it's back to school, it's wrapping up vacations, and the attendance just really drops. So we're giving everyone a little break. Um, and then just looking forward to future events, we have quite a few things happening in the fall. Uh, hopefully, we're going to kick things off with River Days on September 18th. Uh, just waiting for the state to give the okay to use the meadows. That will be followed by Grimm's Haunted House in October, which will be a multi-day event. Um, every year, it just gets bigger and better, so hope we have a great turnout, um, and that obviously COVID doesn't have any impact to that. Um, and then a couple other things in the works for the holidays that are still getting ironed out. Um, as always, we're looking for volunteers. If anyone has any extra time and wants to help plan this kind of stuff, uh, we are always happy to have more hands to help.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Next item, Jen, you're up. Board of Ed update.
Thank you, Bob. As I call up my notes here, I just want to say I appreciate a two-person uh, meeting here as opposed to the 11-person meetings that we have where everybody has a say. It's why your meetings are so, so enjoyable to watch. First of all, I want to let you guys know that we appointed a new superintendent of schools, Mr. Jeffrey Whibby. Jeff, um, possesses a huge background, all the way from kindergarten to grade 12, in every level, from a teacher, assistant principal, all the way up to being the, um, superintendent of schools for Connecticut Technical Education and Career Systems, which was, which is the entire VOTech high school system through the, uh, through the state. He has over 11,000 students. Um, yes, just a breadth of experience, and we're really excited to appoint him. He also is very excited to begin his work. He told us at his appointment that he's going to start off by listening to the community, meeting everybody, staff, students, and, um, plans on working together to raise HK to the next level of educational excellence, because he already told us how great we are, and we already knew that, of course. Um, he's going to be beginning on October 12th of this year. Um, our interim superintendent, Dr. Patty Foot, she gave us a report on summer learning opportunities that we've been offering in our schools this summer, um, to help prepare all of our students to be ready academically for the 2021 school year. We had nearly, we have nearly 90 students, um, who participated in person in our schools to focus on the essential content and skills needed for success next year. And then we had another 90 students in grades three through eight who participated online, personal learning that they could do at their convenience. As you understand, summer learning is not necessarily convenient for all families, all, there's a lot of, um, a lot of transportation issues. So we had both modes available to hopefully help those students be able to be ready for the start of the next school year. And speaking of the next school year, as Bob mentioned, we are still, um, waiting on guidance. We've shared with the community that we do not have guidance on mask wearing yet, and other safety measures, actually, to reopen our schools. And as soon as we do, Dr. Patty Foot will be, um, reviewing that and then communicating that to our school community um, about the protocols that everybody will be expected to, or not expected to follow. Um, and really fantastic news, our KESPTO donated $75,000 to build a new playground system over at KES. It's, um, really amazing amount of, of fundraising there. And they worked together with the KES principal, with Director of Operations, our facilities committee for the Board of Ed, um, and Superintendent Hagman to find an age-appropriate design that's acceptable for the space. Um, it's going to be enjoyed by the community for years to come, and we're really excited and grateful for the work that they did to make that happen. Um, in spending news, we, uh, the facilities committee proposed, and we all agreed as a board, to authorize $20,000 from the emergency operating account to replace lamps and ballasts at the high school athletic field, the football field, usually, it's usually used for football. Um, and then also $24,000 to repair and recertify the bleachers at several of the high school athletic fields, so that we could be ready for the fall. Um, in other news, the, our Director of Finance, Anne Adriani, has worked with both towns, both Hattam and Killingworth, their Boards of Finance, to agree on a new payment schedule. I think this is something that both towns have been requesting for a couple of years now. Um, we have changed the monthly payments from nine payments to 11 and adjusted the percentage. It's still the same amount, but it's adjusted the percentage. And additionally, the board, um, I'm sorry, the district has agreed to put the audited fund balance straight towards the July payment instead of spacing it out over the entire payment, the nine, what was a nine-month payment schedule, as had been previously done. So that July payment is a little bit less for both towns. And then finally, for any parent who is paying attention, might be reading these minutes, there is still summer learning that's happening for all students, not just those who decided to participate. There's reading and math on our website, um, under summer learning opportunities on the RSD17.org website. And I'd be happy to take any questions if Bob or Kate have any.
I don't, Jen, Kate?
No, no questions here.
Okay, thanks, Jen. Good report, as always. Next item, tax rebate. We have requests for three tax, tax refunds. Three refunds on real estate totaling $4,123.95. Kate, I will tell you, I don't know if you knew it, but on the first two listings, Loretta is actually a real estate, uh, escrow company. I had to ask Kristen who Loretta was and why she was doing all this.
Don't you know?
Anyway, can I have a motion to approve the tax refunds as requested by the tax planner?
Yes, this is Kate, motion to approve the requested tax refunds.
All right, further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Okay, motion carries. All right, next item on the list is Higginham Cove Advisory Committee. Kate, you should have gotten the, the list of volunteers in your package. Um, Bill has put together a committee. It's a multi-partisan committee. Uh, it's like a friends of the cove advice to talk with about how, what should we be doing down in the cove? Um, I'll read his. "The charge of the committee shall be to advise First Selectmen or Board of Selectmen regarding future uses in the cove, including linkages to other open spaces, ongoing maintenance, desired improvements, rules and regulations, community awareness and promotion of unique features of the property." So can I have a motion to set up the committee as recommended by the town planner?
Yes, this is Kate, motion to approve, um, the newly appointed Higginham Cove Advisory Committee.
All right, and members proposed were Peter Baird, Sue DeCarly, Tim McCain, Jessica Condo, Ed Sweng, Tim Tarrant, and Dante Ursini. Any further comments? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, we have a resignation. I'll not read the actual email, but Mark Lundgren has submitted his resignation from the Sustainability Committee. Yeah, I'd like a motion to accept that resignation.
This is Kate, motion to approve, uh, Mark Lundgren's resignation from the Sustainability Committee.
All right, I have no further comments. Kate, do you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no one opposed? All right, new business. We've got four or five items on here. I will open with community septic. This item was put on here predominantly because of discussions that were held at the town meeting. It was a little bit off the subject of the meeting, but they were worthwhile discussions. Um, the Higginham Center Study Report recommended, based on the participation of the roughly 250 people there, that the creation of the community septic at HES is a top priority. Uh, we have never actually come out and formally endorsed that recommendation. So therefore, I'm bringing forward a resolution to do that. I'll read it to it, and then I'll ask Maurice, your force behind this, if you have any comments to make, and then we'll move from there. So we're proposing that a resolution reading be it resolved, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Hattam ratifies recommendation 5.2, Communities Septic of the Higginham Center Report, which states, and I quote, "It is clear that the creation of community septic system is a most important fundamental action that must be taken in order to revitalize and regenerate the character of Higginham Center. Based on community input, it is clear that this is a priority." All right, that is the resolution. Maurice, do you have any comments to make at this point?
Uh, actually, I think you took care of it very nicely, Bob. Thank you very much. Maybe just two more comments in the whereas portion. That is, that in the town-approved POCD of January 2018, they said, "The time has come to invest in a sewer plan that will support business in the village of Higginham." And then there was another one, executive summary by Fosse and O'Neil of, uh, March of 2018, that the greatest challenge in looking at the Scoville Hole property was a lack of water and sewer infrastructure. So these things all fit in with what you're talking about, and that sounds like good affirmation that you're doing. Thank you.
Okay, Kate, any comments?
No, nope. Um, this is Kate. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution regarding, uh, the community septic for Higginham Center.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Just, just for clarity, I want to make it clear that this resolution doesn't mean the only thing we're going to be working on is the community septic. It's when we have the choice with resources to work on community septic versus another project, and hanging for the revitalization of Higginham Center, community septic will take priority. Uh, and also, it doesn't mean this project takes priority. Everything else on town, just it takes priority over the other revitalization projects in Higginham Center. All right, continuing on with the addition of a new finance director. We have to, we're adding her, of course, to the signature authority for our two accounts at Liberty Bank. The bank, unlike others, some others requires a resolution authorizing Anne and the other signers to be able to sign. Like I said, we're just adding Anne to it. So we need a motion to approve the resolutions required for Liberty Bank for the signatory information on the accounts.
Uh, this is Kate, motion to approve.
Okay. Uh, I have nothing to add. Kate, do you have any questions or anything to add?
No.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion aye, motion carries. Next resolution we need, if this is dealing with the Beaver Meadow Road Culvert, where the state is steep grant for it is, excuse me, the lots of grant for it is $404,000. We need a resolution authorized, the Board of Selectmen has authorized me to sign the local bridge program supplemental application and any associated agreements that need to be made between the state of Connecticut and the town for the culvert, which is technically bridge number 06938. So Kate, can I have a motion authorizing me to sign?
You sure can. This is Kate, motion to approve.
All right, any, any other comments or questions on it, Kate?
No.
None. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is a request for elderly tax relief. The town has a resolution ordinance that was passed in, uh, let's see, 2013, or possibly revised in 2013, but the last work on it was 2013. It authorizes tax relief for any, uh, qualifying individual, it's elderly tax relief, as long as their income is less than $55,000. We have a request from somebody whose income was $56,000 plus, $56,881 that we grant her the tax relief as well. My view on it is, if we want to adjust the rate, and perhaps that is appropriate, it'd be more appropriate to do it across the boards with a change to the resolution. I am, I get nervous when we start waiving requirements, because then what, what is the upper limit? Is it 55,000? It is 56,800. Is it 60? Is it whatever? Uh, but so we can vote on it. Kate, can you make a motion to approve the elderly tax relief appeal?
Uh, yes, this is Kate, motion to approve.
All right, Kate, do you have any other comments?
Yes, I kind of have the same thought process as you in recognizing how close it is to the minimum, um, but it is over the minimum. So at what point, you know, do we stop saying yes to people? And I do have a question, too. Has this, um, have previous boards approved requests like this that were close to the minimum?
Uh, Joanne is shaking her head yes, but certainly we haven't in the year and a half we've been in.
Yeah, they waived it last year. Um, you didn't have the chance to do any in 2020.
Yeah, that was waived by the state.
Mm-hmm.
Due to the COVID.
Due to COVID, correct.
Due to COVID, correct. But years past, they're done every time this time of year. And we usually get, you know, a few more than just one.
Right.
And they have, have they been approved in the past?
Yes.
Do you know to what level, Joanne?
Um, I want to say, I don't remember, but we can still look at minutes. I want to say within fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, and this one is, go ahead, Kate.
I was going to say, I mean, I, if that's the case, I would feel more comfortable tabling this or abstaining until we can get more information about the precedents that have been set in the past, and also maybe look at adjusting this moving forward.
Okay, I have no objection to that. Kate, do you want to withdraw your motion?
Yes, this is Kate. I will withdraw my motion to approve the elderly tax refund application.
Okay, and now make a motion to table it?
Motion to table the elderly relief tax application until next meeting.
All right. Further discussion? All in favor of tabling it, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, last two items. We need a town meeting. It has to be preceded by a public hearing. We have, are required by state statute, if we're going to have a community septic system, we have to have a water pollution control authority established, which requires an ordinance from the town. Actually, we presented the ordinance as approved, recommended by the town planner, reviewed and approved by the town attorney. Actually, in July of last year, if you remember, we had a town meeting at the HK Auditorium. We talked about the charter revision. We handed out copies of this proposed ordinance. And that was also when we had the voting, which could either be drive-through or come into the auditorium and vote on replacements for an empty Board of Education seat. So it's been presented once, but the hearing has to be within two weeks of the town meeting. And I doubt many people even remember we talked about it. So we should have a hearing to discuss that, followed by a town meeting. I'm proposing a date for the public hearing of Wednesday fifteenth of September, followed by a town meeting two weeks later, Wednesday nine twenty-nine. Definitely, this water pollution control authority ordinance will be on the table. Potentially, we may have a couple of other items that are still being developed. Abandoning Old Chester Road in the vicinity of the roundabouts has been requested by the state. We may be able to move forward with that. And also, we may be looking at transferring Shopboard Rock, which is contiguous to the Swan Hill property, to the land trust, where we have some things to take a look at for that. So those two may be added, and it's potential there may be others, but we'll discuss them at the next Board of Selectment meeting. So all we have to do today is set the dates if we can. Kate, dates work.
Yes, the dates work for me.
Yeah, and we know they work for Sean also. He's let us know by email. So yeah, Kate, if you would make a motion for that, please. Town hearing.
I make a motion to hold a town meeting on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Oh, no, wait, did I do that right?
Your town hearing.
Wait, so the public hearing is on September fifteenth?
Correct.
Okay, so this is Kate, motion to hold a public hearing on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, followed by a town meeting on September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one.
All right, I have nothing to add, Kate. Any other comments? All right, call for a vote, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have gone through the new business. Last call, any public comments? Marge, you're muted. I don't.
No, but thank you for, it was interesting to be with you and in a sense.
Always, always a pleasure to have you, Marge. Any other comment? Okay, hearing none. Kate, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Never fails. All right, everyone, thanks for attending. Have a good evening.